Uh, Robin, can you do roll call?
Council President Wiggins.
Here.
Council Vice President Jones.
Here.
Councilmember Baer. Councilmember Brer.
Here.
Councilmember Rotten. Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Patton.
Here.
Thank you. And we'll move to the discussion items, which is, uh, item number one is two, three dash zero, zero, five, eight, six, fiscal year 2024 City Council Budget Workshop. And John, do I turn it over to you?
Yes, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Thank you. Council President, members of the city council. Uh, I'm just gonna go over real quickly, uh, the process. We're gonna start out with the mayor presenting, uh, his proposed budget to you all. Uh, then we will have Ms. Yvette for the council overview, then Amy Lavoy for their overview and, and issues that they may see. And then we'll go into the, uh, departments. The departments will just give you a brief overview and then be available to answer any questions you have. We're not going to do the dog and pony show of a bunch of presentations and things like that. This is really just an opportunity for you to get some of the questions that you might have, uh, answered ahead of, of the September, uh, first public hearing. So at that, I will turn it over to Mayor Reeves for his presentation of the budget.
All right. Um, thank you. Um, thank you, council and council staff, and, and certainly a big thank you to, um, to the administration, administration and, and staff for all the hard work to get us here. Of course, as, as everybody knows, this is my first process through this, so, uh, certainly been through processes like this on the private side, but, um, uh, but, you know, there's a lot of learning, a lot of research and a lot of time that we spent to make, to try to, uh, to get the best product possible, uh, in front of you. So, uh, as you'll see, and you've got a letter in front of you, I know now, um, you know, you have a, in front of you, a balanced budget, uh, and no property, uh, tax millage increase. And, uh, what you'll see really, if I were going to give you a synopsis of, uh, is, we really tried to look at building from the inside out, and I really mean in two ways. One is, um, as you've seen over the, certainly the last nine months, uh, trying to do the best we can to improve the maintenance, uh, of the things that we have. And, but, and not, that's our buildings, our parks. Um, so, uh, as I've mentioned to many folks now publicly, uh, you know, we, I don't, we don't look at this budget as, as necessarily a lot of shiny new things. We look at this as an opportunity for us to modernize and really get right within the things that, that we maintain. And, and I believe, uh, we have a lot of great assets for, for the citizens of, of the city of Pensacola, uh, and, uh, you know, it's also our duty to make sure that those are, can be used. And, um, so, so you'll see some investments in that, in buildings and facilities and to, and some staffing, uh, that can make sure that we're on top of those things and that they don't get away from us, uh, in terms of maintenance. And then the second thing, building from the inside out, is people. And, uh, there isn't an organization I've ever been involved with that the, the people who work there aren't the most important asset that we have. And if we want things to be maintained, if we want, uh, to have the city, uh, to really work at its best, i- it's gonna start with the people who show up here every day. So, uh, so we're looking at our ability to make sure that, that we're competitive, um, not just from a, from a salary and financial standpoint, but from an employee engagement standpoint, and making sure that we, uh, you know, can provide a place that people, uh, want to show up and work, uh, at, and are happy to show up to work every day. So, um, so there's a lot of, that's a complex challenge with any organization, but, but again, you'll see, uh, the overarching theme and the investments, uh, in our, is, is, in, um, people and in, uh, maintaining the things that we have. Um, and at the end of the day, you know, I always say, strategy is exciting, but, you know, we really have to get to execution. Uh, and, and that's what I mean, is you'll see project managers in there, you'll see building maintenance, you'll see some, some real dollars behind investing in people. Uh, and so, uh, so that'll be our duty, uh, if this is a budget that, that, uh, is passed to make sure that we execute all of those things. So, um, so thank you for, happy to take any questions, uh, that you have throughout the day, and, uh, I appreciate you guys entertaining this and looking forward to the conversation today. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just before we go to Ms. Yvette, I have one thing that I forgot to add. We have, uh, refreshments in the galley back there, and we're, our plan is to have a working lunch. So we anticipate that we'll, we'll probably be a little bit ahead of schedule at some point around noonish, so that we can take a short break. You can get lunch, bring it in here, and, uh, one of the advantages of having it in Hagler Mason that we don't have in, in the council chambers is we allow food in here, and we don't in the council chambers. So, uh, I just wanted to let you all know that, that we, we have that, and our intent is to get through our entire list today, so we don't have to add a second day.
And now, I'll turn it over to Ms. Yvette.
Good morning, Council President, members of council. Um, I just wanted to give you a brief overview. You've already received my packet, so a lot of this you've already read, but I wanted to just kinda go over some of this with you. There we go. So the budget is a total of $313,871,700. It's an increase of 36.5 million. The bulk of that is gonna come from airport. I think there was, uh, some larger grants than we've budgeted in the past, so they in- increased that. The general fund is an increase of 6.4 million, which we'll go over in a little bit, and gas utility is 1.6 million. Innovation and technology is 1.3 million, and the bulk of that is going to be coming from, for the replacement of the financial software system that we've had. We implemented the one we have right now in 2004, so it's probably past time to go ahead and do it. I know we've been putting that off for a while. And then the three TIFs are going up 1.8 million. In the general fund, there's a 3.26 million revenue growth before the transfer from Pensacola Energy, and then the energy, uh, Pensacola Energy transfer to the general fund is increasing 3.1 million. So it's going from 8 million to 11 million. And there is a council policy that we have no more than 15% of Pensacola Energy revenues transferred to the general fund, so currently this transfer represents 14.88. However, this is increasing the reliance of the general fund on weather-related revenue, which the gas is affected by revenue. It's also affected by the price of gas. And this could possibly affect bond ratings, should we want to go into, uh, any type of borrowing with the gas system and with the general fund, which I don't see anything with the general fund, but the gas system possibly could. In the general fund, there is a fund balance drawdown. This is the fifth year of fund balance. The council policy does state that the recurring expenditure should be financed only with reoccurring revenues. However, there is a caveat in there that you can draw down fund balance of no more than 3% of beginning revenues. So the 1.7 million does represent 2.36% of the revenues. Again, this could affect bond ratings because in the past, which I put in your packet, it does show that when we did get, um, the Fitch ratings, there were comments on there about that we were not drawing down fund balance, and we were lessening our reliance on that. So it, it's a possibility. I mean, I, I, we have the money right now, and there is a three-year plan, so if in one year we see that we're not making the savings each year that we thought we would, then we would have at least two years to make a correction on that. So, but I just wanted to point that out, so that you're all aware of where we're at with that. Personnel expenses in the general fund are increasing 4.6 million. However, this does not include an increase for the fire union, other than their up-to-2% merit. They're currently in negotiations. So I imagine that once the final agreement has been met, then a supplemental budget resolution usually comes with, when council, um, approves that or ratifies that contract. There is a almost 1.3 million that's appropriated within the budget, uh, mayor's budget, but that's for the implementation of the pay study. So that's kind of like in a holding place, so that once the pay study begins its implementation, that will be a start for that. And then 138,600 has been appropriated within the council's budget to provide the same group insurance benefit as employees, and I believe at this next meeting, you'll have your second ordinance reading on that. Now, I just wanna point out, that is under the assumption that all seven of you will take family coverage. I doubt that that's gonna happen, that all seven of you would, but conservatively, we wanted to make sure that we had the full amount in there. So you'll probably see in the 25 budget, that number is going to decrease, just because I don't think all of you are going to take advantage of the family coverage. Operating expenditures are increasing 1.4 million, and as we have told you in the past, we wanted to get a community outreach slash town hall meeting funding for each one of you. So that does include 28,000 for the, for that, 4,000 for each district. The mayor's discretionary is going from 25,000 to 50,000. Uh, the parks YMCA agreement, I guess because of the increased cost of that, is going up 175,000. And then in the police department, they have 361,800 more for this data encryption software, and there's a new latent station, uh, from the Florida Department of Law Enforcement, and then the body camera system cloud-based services that they're adding. As the mayor said, there's no millage rate increase. There's an additional 2.4 million in property taxes that we're receiving. However, once you take out the addition that we have to give to the three TIFs, that increase is really 1.7 million net for the general fund. Currently, with this budget, one mil equals 5.6 million. So, a lot of people like to know, well, if we raise it a mil, how much would that give us? Well, it would give us 5.6, but net after the TIFs, 4.5 million. Not that anyone's suggesting that we increase it, that's just information that we like to give you. And you can see how well the TIF valuations did. Um, Westside, I think it was in the 30 percentile last year also, so they're growing very well. For the city council reserves, you have $14 million, and that's the same that it's been. Uh, a while back, we, uh, the council agreed to change where no interest income is being added, so nothing has been added. The count, council policy is that we have a minimum of 20%. With this increase in the general fund, between the revenues and the transfer from Pensacola Energy, we will now be at 19.51. So what I will be asking the finance department, when they either do their end-of-the-year resolution or their carryover, is to appropriate that extra $355,000, so that we will be in compliance with the 20%. And then based on the projection of appropriations that's shown in the budget, we may need an additional 400,000 in the next two years to maintain that 20% requirement at the end of '24 and the end of '25. And that's just a planning statement, so that you know that we may have to do that. Currently, there's no rate increase for Pensacola Energy, but in the, in the revenue assumption indicates they may need to increase the rates during '24. So I don't know where they're at with that, and I'm sure that Ms. Lavoy will be able to, um, provide more information on where they're at with the rate increases. But it could be a problematic, uh, issue to increase the rates at the same time you're increasing the transfer to the general fund. Sanitation, the CPI increases 5%. They are proposing a 4%. However, that is from the ordinance 2522 that was adopted around this time last year, and it was actually a five-year plan to increase the rates. So you will not see any rate increase unless they deviate from that. You will not see anything come before you for the next four years now, um, because it's already been established. And then the sanitation equipment surcharge is going up a dollar, and with no plans over that five-year plan to increase. There's 11 new positions from the '23 beginning budget. Four net were added during '23. So you had deletions, additions, so, but the net was four, and then seven have been added with the '24 proposed budget. And the employee compensation for the police union, the officers and sergeants, there is a 4% included, and for the lieutenants, a 3%. ASME is a 3% as well. So both, all of these, the, all the three unions for the police and the ASME, this is the third year of the three-year contract, so they will be going into negotiations in '24 in preparation for the '25 budget. And the non-union is going up 3%. According to the HR manual, it's based on the CPI as of the prior September, so the prior September was 8.2, so they're just limiting it at 3%, which I believe this happened last year as well. It was a lot higher, and we kept it at 3%. There is no increase proposed in the fiscal year '24 budget for the stormwater utility fee. It's currently at $80 per ESU. There is a drawdown of fund balance of 218,300, with additional drawdowns planned in '25 and '26. What this could mean is if, and I'm, I'm very conservative, so I just assume we're gonna spend everything, if they spend everything that's projected, at the end of '26, the fund balance could possibly be $56. So that is somewhat concerning that we've got that. So at some point, we may need to either address increasing the ESU rate or reducing expenditures to maintain a balanced budget with ongoing revenues, um, to fund the ongoing expenditures. And the capital equipment is funded within the Stormwater Capital Projects Fund, so there is no capital to reduce within the Stormwater Utility Fund. On page 103 of your budget, you'll see the listing of the '24 Stormwater Capital Projects, and on pages 109 to 113, you'll see the local ops and sales tax plan. It does expire in December 31, 2028. It's my understanding from the county that they're going to try and put the renewal on the '24 referendum, and that way, if they doesn't go that way, then they've got the '26 referendum that they could try it. They'll have one more stab at it. Um, but basically, there's really nothing left in this current one, other than some savings that we might have at the end of the year, which is something that we can discuss later with the mayor's office, of how we want to possibly discuss what to do with that, if anything, or if we wanna just hold it until we get closer to the end. In the original proposed budget, and in prior budgets, we had the Bayland Street Marina Sewal refurbishment was shown in '24, but it looks like it was not picked up in the appropriations, but the online version has since been changed from the printed version that you received, and I think you received a copy of the revised, uh, this morning. Again, at the end of '22, we had an additional 2.6 million over the budgeted levels that were received, and that additional revenue, 1.2 million was put to the Palo Fox Road Diet, and 1.4 million was put towards the Roger Scott Tennis Center. We're estimating, I, well, I'm estimating conservatively, that we're gonna have an additional 2.8 to 3 million dollars that we could have at the end of 3 million, I mean, at the end of 2023. So again, we could possibly hold a workshop in the future to discuss the projects to utilize the additional revenue. And then we have the future date, so Monday, you will, uh, as sitting as the CRA, you will, uh, be presented with the budget to approve for the CRA, and then September 6 is the first public hearing, and September 13th is the final public hearing. Those are on Wednesdays, and they'll both be at 5:30, and they will be in the council chambers. And with that, I will entertain any questions, or we can move into Ms. Lavoy's presentation.
And, City Council, just so everyone knows, that information that you were all just given, that was also provided to administration, uh, as well. We didn't, we don't do gotchas, so we gave it to them. Actually, we probably gave it to them ahead of giving it to you all, uh, to ensure that if there was any angst about anything, we could have discussions about that before we sent it out to you all. So we just wanted you to be aware that we have provided them with everything that you're seeing, we provided it to the mayor's office and administration as well.
And, and let me just add too, it, which I very much appreciate you guys, uh, doing that, but that also, I, I also wanna, we've had some confusion on questions that, that that, whether that was a shared document, uh, that, that certainly, we may have a difference of a pin, there's, you know, some subjectivity potentially within that that we may or may not agree with, which is totally fine. I just wanna be clear that that was an independent document presented to you guys, and then, and we'll, I'm sure throughout today, we'll talk about some of those things that we wanna make sure that we had, that we have clarity on, so.
Good morning, council members. Um, I will try, I'm going to make sure my, my presentation doesn't, um, doesn't maybe dwell on the portions that Yvette did, which Yvette very well presented, so I'm gonna move around a little more quickly. So as the mayor has said, and Yvette has said, there's no proposed change in the millage rate at all. Sanitation rates will, are scheduled to change as something that you have previously adopted. Yvette went through those pretty well. The salary increases, um, are budgeted as follows. The fi, the fire union negotiations have just started, so that we have met the, for the first time with them, so Yvette is correct, that at some point in the future, there will be hopefully a ratified, a contract coming forward to you guys to ratify, hopefully soon. Um, the total budget increased by $36 million. The general fund grew by 6.4 million. I will talk about the transfer from the general fund to the, um, to the gen, to the general fund from Pensacola Energy in just a second, but it is increasing by 3.313 million to bring it to just over $11 million. The largest portion of the budget increase, as Yvette alluded to, occurred in the airport fund, and that is multiple, multiple reasons, several of which you've know or have heard about, which are the capital projects that are beginning and will continue, um, for a while at the airport. Some of them include the runway, uh, rehabilitation, some of it is the ter, beginning of the terminal expansion project, which is a, very much a multi-year project, and you'll see a lot about that in the future. Other than that, the airport has done very well, and their revenues have grown substantially, and as any growing airport, their expenditures have to grow to operate the airport. So, a little bit more in-depth on the, on the increases in the, in the individual departmental budgets. I have not included all of them, all of them are included in your overview package, but just to highlight a few. So some of the mayor's major, um, major initiatives are, as he said, he wanted to build from the inside out. He wanted to make sure, he's said this a number of times, that whatever we promise, we deliver on, and to that end, he's created a content creator in the PIO's office that I believe will be focused on online media. We're increasing, we're not increasing, we're getting into the budget for the first time. The reimbursement for security at the Sun Belt Conference, many of you know the basketball tournament that's held at the Pensacola Civic Center. There was an, there was an agreement made by the previous mayor for a five-year term to support, um, the security at the Sun Belt Conference, so we're just getting that into the budget. The mayor is eliminating one position, which is the Neighborhood Services Director. We are eliminating the Neighborhood Services Department, but merging it into the Economic Development Department. We are also establishing for the first time the operating budget for the Economic Development Department. I think you've seen that already pay off in terms of the American Magic proposal that's come forward, so I think that has paid multi-fold dividends. We are requesting an increase in the mayor's discretionary fund of $25,000, and we are moving an affordable housing position that, that, uh, from housing to report to the economic development. It's not a new position, but we're moving it from one department to the responsibility of another department. There we go. Apologize. Let's try it one more time. As, uh, Yvette alluded to, the city council is increasing their, um, town hall meeting fund by $4,000 per district for a total of $28,000. And Yvette correctly said that we are increasing the budget by $138,000 for the health dental benefits, that you'll see the second reading of that ordinance at your next meeting. We don't anticipate that that will be the full call, since we don't anticipate all of you will take full family coverage. Finance, I'm going to have to present like that, since it my, it won't move. Uh, this is something I wanna, Yvette briefly talked about in the $750,000 increase. This is for a replacement of our existing finance system, so our entire enterprise system needs replacing. It, it reaches end of life in 2027, but I will tell you from experience that this process is like changing the engine out of a car while it is running, and it will take at least a year to accomplish. So this, the money that we are talking about, is coming from the Internal Services Fund, and an Internal Services Fund is a fund that's set aside, and internal services such as IT, such as the garage, such as the mailroom, everybody pays into this fund to pay for those costs. And over time, money is built up, as mu, as residual monies are built up at the end of the year, there's a positive fund balance in that fund. So what I am suggesting we do is we take a large portion of that leftover money that's built up over time, over a number of years, and allow us to switch out the finance system this, this coming budget year in 2024, bef, ahead of the drop-dead date of 2027. One of the reasons I am requesting that we do that is, our preferred vendor is to upgrade to a new version, a new program of the existing model. So, but in order to do that, everybody in the whole state, or in the entire nation, is trying to convert from the existing program to this new program in the same timeframe, such that if I was to try to schedule today to start implementation for this, they're scheduling six months out as we speak today. So even if I get this started, it won't be, at best, until, gosh, six months from October, that we could even start this thing. So if you put that year and a half, plus six months, plus everybody else trying to do the exact same thing at the exact same time, I, I really feel like now is the time to take advantage of this and try to get the upgrade done now. Parks and Rec, there are several items in here. Skate park maintenance, I sure, uh, I think we all were at the opening of the skate park, so we need maintenance for that. The, uh, encampment cleanup, that's to clean up various, various, uh, camps that pop up around the city of Pensacola, and allow us money to actually do the, do the cleanup associated with those. Veterans Memorial Park bathrooms, Martin Luther King bathrooms. The increase to the pool maintenance and operation is a sizable investment in the pool operations, but I wanna remind you of several things. One, we have a new pool house at Cecil Hunter. Two, we're gonna have new facilities at Roger Scott, and the price of everything, especially minimum wage, has increased and will continue to increase, and pool chemicals have increased dramatically. So when you see that, that level of cost, it is just trying to maintain the, what we have right now, which is an initiative that the mayor has. We are also including a new outdoor specialty pursuits position in Parks and Rec. I believe that's gonna be at Bayview. Tech Park Maintenance, this is something we put in the budget prior to the, um, prior to the tech park folks, the soccer folks coming forward and saying they would no longer be needing the tech park as a soccer field. So that $25,000 was titularly made for tech park maintenance, and we would like to move that to, um, other initiatives within parks, because I will tell you, there are numbers of initiatives, and the mayor can go into it if he wants to, that we need to move this money to, in order to, um, maintain what we have currently. Public Works, we're including a new facilities manager. This was a major priority for the mayor, so that we have actual project managers that are available to actually put projects in the ground. You can appropriate money for something all day long, you can have the best construction plans all day long, but if you don't have a project manager who is assigned to get that thing done and get it done right, it won't get done. So this is one of the things that he has put in the budget. The next thing is, um, it's a, it's a large-ticket item. It's the money, but it is not city money that we are using. This is money that the county gives us in order to main, maintain city-owned buildings that are libraries. So in other words, for example, the downtown branch or the tri-on branch, those are both city-owned facilities. So they give us money and we maintain them, or we perform, um, capital improvements as they request. So it's not a city, it's not coming out of the city's budget, it's just money that the county gives us. Police, this was also an initiative of the mayor, which is the community specialist, community response specialist position, and I know that the mayor and Chief Randall can speak to it better than I can, but, um, I'll let them have their turn if they, or if he can, wants to break in at any time. Also new in this budget, previously- Also new in this budget, previously code enforcement had been budgeted in sanitation. It was housed within sanitation. When the responsibility for management of code enforcement has moved from sanitation to the Pensacola Police Department, we took that opportunity to break those finances completely separate from sanitation and establish its own fund. So instead of seeing any finances within the sanitation fund for code enforcement, you're going to see it in a standalone fund, which will be new this year. Yvette talked about the body camera system that's coming forward. This is coming to you at the next council meeting. It's a five-year commitment for this. It will provide a new level of security for our officers and for citizens. So police chief can also speak better than I can to that. Parking, two new parking ambassadors. And 311 will now report to parking. So that's a change in the organization. We're just letting you know. So when you see it on the org chart, that's what's happening. Development Services inspections, this is something that is, it's allowing our inspectors to become multi-certified. So they can become certified in electrical inspections, they can become certified in roofing inspections so that when that inspector goes out, he can do the inspections on more than one thing at a time. It's an enormous time saver on both the city and on the builder. So in order to do that, you have to compensate these people more for getting multi-certified, and that's what that money is, is to allow more compensation to the people who become multi-certified. Also included is an assistant building inspections manager, a permit tech and two office assistant positions. And to remind you, inspections money is paid for exclusively from the permit revenue and the fines that inspections generates. It's not general fund money. Pensacola Energy, there's one deputy director that is included, and there is a proposal to increase the transfer from the general fund from eight million to 3.1 million. So I do want to address that a little bit. So the policy that the council has previously prescribed is, says that they can go up to 15% of the revenues. This is below that, so it's slightly below that, but it is increasing the dollar amounts. So in order to do, in order to do anything, especially initiatives that I've heard the council say, and I've certainly heard the mayor say, which is that we need to maintain what we have. We need to retain valuable employees. We need to maintain our parks. We need to maintain our buildings. We need to maintain everything to a level. And that is an expensive proposition. If we have nothing, we can use a perfect example of this is, I'm sure everybody's acquainted with the amount of money that we just had to spend in City Hall and Fire Station 4 simply for mold remediation, for things that, this was clearly a deferred maintenance issue that there was no money for it. So over time, we had a mold issue come up. So we've just had to spend $400,000 to acquaint that. In order to pay for things like preventative maintenance and things like that, you have to invest in it. And this is an investment to that end. And if I can speak to a bond rating, everything affects your bond rating. I've been, any number of bond issuances, so I'm very well acquainted with the questions that they ask, and a number of things affect them. Weather-related revenue is certainly an issue. Seasonal revenues are an issue. If you've ever tried to issue a bond using terrorist development tax revenues, good luck. They're going to want a back pledge because of the seasonality and the risk for that. Large weather events, living in Florida is an issue for bond. All of these are potential things that could affect your bond rating. I will tell you from experience, governance is a huge one. I've never been through a bond issuance where they didn't ask about governance as far as the legislative and executive branches and how well they function. But by far, the most salient point they will look at is the strength of the balance sheet and the strength of the revenues and expenses. So that is what will matter when you talk about a bond rating. Pensacola Energy's revenues are extremely strong. Their balance sheet is phenomenal. Their reserves are phenomenal. They have a lot of cash brought in, and I am not aware of any short-term financing needs that they are talking about. Airport is, airports certainly will need a bond. Airport debt is considered a separate debt from the rest of the city. It stands alone on its own revenues and expenses. It does not, we can have the best governance in the world, we can have no seasonality in our revenues, and what will matter when you issue an airport debt is the revenues and expenses of that fund. That is coming forward, I'm sure, in a shorter term. I'm not aware of any Pensacola Energy debt. So that is the reason for the increase from the general fund, excuse me, from Pensacola Energy to the general fund. Port of Pensacola, we are eliminating two positions in the port of Pensacola. I think you will see a lot of activity coming forward in the port, both related to American Magic and other things. So the elimination of these two positions, I don't think will affect operations. The airport, as I've mentioned before, and we've talked about, the airport increase is due a lot because of the grants that are coming forward and capital expansion, but it's also the operational nature of the airport. There has been, as you've heard over time, even times that we've had record growth, record numbers at the airport. Well, that breeds additional expenses. And you can see that some of these are operational in nature as it relates to the increased need and the expenditures, and some of it are capital-related as we maintain the airport facility itself. And with that, I will entertain any questions or we can move to, or the mayor wants, may want to have a few comments and then...
Yeah, real quick and then fire away with questions. Just to add to that, and I totally agree and understand that there are certain revenue streams that can be affected by outside factors, but I tend to argue I can't find one line item in this budget that isn't. If we have a recession, if we have a pandemic, if we, things happen year over year that could affect line items. The health of Pensacola Energy's balance sheet as it sits today, as well as, congratulations to Pensacola Energy picking up customers, picking up volume, there should be a city benefit to that, and that's what we see. In previous years, when it was a flat eight million that was being taken, there were years where that was more than 15%. So this is still under 15%, and you know, just because that's how we've always done it, you know, I just believe that, you know, we funded previous administration, previous councils have funded raises with one-time money, you know, with fire and other things like that. So I guess what I'm saying is that's what the budget process is for is year over year. If there was a deficiency in the reserves of Pensacola Energy or something like that that needed to be, you know, fixed before we were to be able to move on and invest in other parts of the city, then that would make more sense to us. But that's where the spirit of that change in terms of the line item with Pensacola Energy comes from. And then again, happy to talk about any of the other things in there, or we can wait for those individual departments, but thanks.
I just have one quick question, just out of curiosity for me. The veterans bathroom and the MLK bathrooms, isn't that covered under the DIB and the veterans, the veterans park? The 25,000 for the bathrooms?
Amy's coming up. I don't think that it's covered, the veterans bathrooms are covered under that, but I will let Amy answer that.
There we go. Mr. Council President, members of council, the ongoing maintenance and cleaning of those restaurants is not covered by DIB, no.
All right, just curious. Thank you. And sorry, Council President, let me add to, as you guys have heard us talk about in other meetings, you know, we're looking at bathroom facilities and partnerships with them as well. But really, that speaks to the line items there is actually having some line items in the budget to maintain things. You know, when we walked in to start, the skate park had $0 of future maintenance. I'd love to believe that we can spend $0 on the skate park moving forward. That would be great, but not realistic. So as you know, there's the grant money that is coming for veterans memorial park bathroom, so that, you know, could affect it. And we're in conversations with DIB about the MLK Plaza as well. So there could be other facilities coming, and so it remains to be seen, you know, whose responsibility of maintenance will be one or the other. So more to come on that, but we certainly want to make sure that we've got the dollars budgeted if those are going to be assets that we have or that we're responsible for.
Is this not working? No?
I didn't try it, so.
I did try it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question. So I guess I didn't realize there was extra money available in Pensacola Energy for a transfer like this. And I know when just Pensacola talked about the money that might be available, I was like, well, I don't know if we have that money available. Is this going to affect the, you know, the Pensacola Energy's ability to update their infrastructure? I know we've got some old pipes and things, and I wasn't sure if this is going to impact anything negatively by taking this money from them.
I don't, I'm not aware of anything that we have not fully budgeted with respect to Pensacola Energy in the short, in the short and midterm, as far as their capital infrastructure.
Okay, so, well, he's not there, so. So if this money was not going to come to, like, for use for another purpose, come into the, I guess, the general fund or wherever it ends up, would it just go into reserve? Is that what it would do, this 3.1 million or whatever?
It would. It would go into fund balance. Whatever is not spent goes into their fund balance at the end of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Theirs, Pensacola Energy's.
Okay, thank you.
So on the same subject, tying this 3.1 million to sort of the expenditures that you're using it on, I guess my question is, are these, it sounds like a lot of it's maybe employees and salaries and that sort of thing. So from a sort of year-to-year standpoint, recurring, is this, are we sort of now setting ourselves up to need 3.1 million from Pensacola Energy going forward because we're using this on things that we're going to continue to need to draw funds for?
Yeah, so it really depends on how you look at it. I don't really see that we're using it necessarily for things that were in perpetuity. You see, and those numbers are accurate, the jobs created, there's been four jobs created, you know, of course, I'd argue three of those four jobs brought in $88 million, so that's been a good return so far. But what we're also looking at through the salary study isn't just necessarily how do we make sure that we're paying competitively? It's also that we did an FTE study at the same time, that we make sure that departments are the right size for our size budget, and we compared that as well. And so when we're looking at this holistically, it's not just keep everything status quo and look at raises. We want to make sure we're competitive, but we also are going to say, hey, you know, a job that hasn't been filled for two years, is that a job that we still need? So you see a net gain to jobs, but again, my experience has always been you're looking at top-line revenue and you're looking at what the cost of labor is against top-line revenue. And I think, so, you know, I see it as those dollars being used for more, you know, park maintenance, Parks and Rec, things like that. But at the end of the day, you know, if we thought this was a one-time dollar amount, and again, previous councils have used one-time dollars for raises for departments. So we believe this has certainly more long game than that. And what it really is, is, and it's a kudos to Pensacola Energy, is picking up big customers, adding more volume. Well, you know, at some point, just because we've always only taken eight million, which has been higher than 15%, if you care about the percentage, we've taken more than 15% from them in years past, then this is still less than that 15%. And it's just, you know, a way for us, for the city as a whole, to reap the benefit of the, you know, the great job that Energy is doing. So if we thought that it was going to jeopardize Pensacola Energy or their reserves in any kind of way, obviously, there'd be a different discussion. But, you know, I think it's, to put it simply, it's, you know, their success and their ability to help, you know, the city run, you know, run better because of it. So, but my point is, is pensions are affected by a recession. I mean, we could go, we could spend an hour talking about things that if something happened outside of actions taken by the city, that would negatively impact us. Health insurance premiums going up. I mean, all of these things affect us outside that we have to adjust to every year. So again, if the health of Pensacola Energy is okay and it gives us the ability to get right with some things that we need to get right with, then we think that's a prudent decision.
Yeah, and listen, I have no problem with the idea of paying people what we should pay them and having the right people in place. None of that is, you know, at all an issue with me. It's just more, is it setting us up for needing money, more money from them maybe over time if gas prices climb or, you know, if there are different economic factors that affect Pensacola Energy? And so that's really the question. And I think, I don't know if you can tie that revenue back to specific uses that, you know, you've applied it to, and money's fungible, so that may or may not be, you know, possible. But that's the thrust of my question and not necessarily concern, but want to make sure that, you know, we have a good plan for that.
Passwoman, prayer.
Thank you. I, just philosophically here, I think when we have these overages, we need to be extremely focusing them on maintenance. And I know that that's our policy, that is the idea here when we have this kind, but I know we can look at money different ways and say this is coming from this part, but I don't believe this money should be used on recurring expenses. But I do believe the excess from the gas is what I'm talking about, that I think that it needs to be identified and recognized that it is to, you know, anytime you have a windfall, you fix everything up, you make sure everything's in shape, your house is in order kind of thing. That's how I think we have to look at this for that kind of safety down the road. But also, I think we actually have to look, I mean, I get that we're abundant right now, but there is a move nationally, and I'm going to say it out loud, that does not include gas. And we have to also be looking down the road to potentially other income streams for this entity. And so I would think that we're investing, looking way down and investing part of this and looking at how we modify in the future potentially. Also, just to say, I don't care what past councils do. This is this council that wants to do it, right?
I agree. I don't care what past administrations do. That's exactly right.
Exactly right, that's right. Okay, it's us now, so we won't use them, but I do believe that we need to make sure that this money is targeting fixing things and making sure everything is in good maintenance because when we're low on money and we don't have those, then we get in these years of trouble with mold and things like that. So I just want to make sure that if we accept and transfer this money over, this overage, that we're gearing it towards maintenance, I mean, to what you said earlier and to the position to have a manager making sure these jobs are getting done. I mean, there's one road with a huge hump in it that I'm told is six months out possibly, six weeks to six months out or something like that. I mean, that is a long time for residences and making sure that the quality of, the quality of living within the city of Pensacola is known to the people. The other would be, is can we not use some of these overages to supplement the stormwater and make sure that we take care of that? Because we've got, just this morning, there's a walk going on between a neighborhood adjacent to Cordova Mall. Our staff said it's not us, and they're saying it's not, I mean, everyone is just passing the buck, but in the meantime, we're having houses flooded every single time it rains. So to adjust those kinds of things.
Well, I'll let Amy speak to the technical aspects of that, but what I'll tell you, just as a one-year heads up, is we've got to face the stormwater.
We do.
Assessment issue. It was assessed two years ago that it should be $100. I think it was at 70.
And it should be.
And we're around 80. Amy, correct? Yeah. So you can guarantee that whatever it was two years ago, if we were to do that same study now, it's going to be higher than the 100. I'm just spitballing and saying, call it 110. We're about, you know, you think about the percent, we're at 80. It should be at 110. And Amy Toodle and, you know, everyone, David Forte, everyone involved on the public works side can tell you, you know, we're not even treading water in terms of those stormwater expenses. So, I mean, we had a brief conversation, it was really more of a timing thing, we had a brief conversation about whether we would do that right now, I mean, in previous weeks.
Also, just since you brought that up, just a little side note here, it's EMU, is that what it's called for the stormwater assessment?
ESU.
ESU, okay. Just humorously, it's 2,995 square feet of impervious surface, is that what it is?
It's right around there if it's not that exact.
No, it's literally, I think it's 2,995. Why the heck aren't we 3,000 or 2,500? But this 2,995 is, just saying, if we moved it to 2,500.
I think engineers came up with that.
Well, it's hilarious. It is very funny, but if you did 2,500 instead, that inadvertently would also do the same thing, still be 80 ESUs.
Gotcha. Yeah, Joe, I'm just, I'll let Amy answer your other technical questions. I just, as I said, I wanted you guys to know that we were this close to having the conversation now because, and I know we'll feel a little bit of the pain of that, you know, the coming this year because we are already, you know, below treading water and then we'll have another year of that.
Literally below treading water, and it is serious. And once again, to that notion, if you're going to live within And once again, to that notion, if you're going to live within the city and you're going to pay the extra mils to live within the city, then these things for comfort of life have to be serious, and we can't be passing the buck and saying, well, that's that person's fault or this one or that one's, and instead taking each and every one of these very seriously. So that's my two cents.
Councilwoman Patton.
So this is more of a point of order or whatever process. I mean, I do have questions on certain items that came up during Amy's presentation, but, you know, they may relate to the Parks and Rec budget or they may relate to some, you know, the police budget or whatever. So just tell me, you know, how are we doing that? Should we raise those now as a result of the presentation or should I just wait?
If it's, and correct me if I'm wrong, but if it's for directed towards Parks and Recs, let's just wait until Parks and Recs come up?
Okay. That's fair.
If not, if you want to act now.
That's fine. That's right. That works out.
Council President, Don may have touched on this, but we absolutely welcome proposed changes. If you have changes that you want to make to the budget, we welcome them. If you want to take a straw vote, I know you can't officially vote, but give us a consensus of the council. We can make a list of those and you will see them at your public hearings. So don't feel like you have to wait until the public hearings to give them. We welcome them now as a process. So as it relates to the stormwater, there's actually, so the reason, a stormwater assessment is, has to specially benefit a property. And in order to determine the special benefit of that, it engineers calculate whatever the impervious surface and the impact would be. So it is an actual study that came up with that. That is what the mayor alluded to, that we need to get updated if we want to talk about rates in the future, which would be next year.
Just one more, if I may. I'm sorry.
It's Councilman.
Is this working now?
It is. Thank you, Mr. President. And I just wanted to piggyback on what Councilwoman Brayer said, is that, you know, I've watched plenty of times on the state level when I was a lobbyist for the University of West Florida, when they were talking about recurring versus non-recurring money and what you could spend non-recurring money on. You don't want to put yourself in a position where you start spending non-recurring money on recurring money. I know we've done that in the past, but I would feel much more comfortable with this 3.1 million if we identified things that are non-recurring, not something, you know, if we had like a list of things that we're going to focus this money on, I would feel much more comfortable approving this budget if we had something like that for that 3.1 million. Thank you.
Councilwoman Brayer.
And one more about the millage. I know that we're not increasing the millage rate, but we are going to have an increase in funds. Now, we have to advertise that one, true, because even though the millage rate doesn't increase because the property tax values did, that is still reviewed as a tax...
Tax increase.
Okay.
So you will see a notice of tax increase ad by law, by state law, there's a very prescribed way, you have to levy millage. By law, we will put a notice in the Pensacola News Journal two to five days before your second public hearing to adopt the budget. That's all statutory language, but it is a very large ad that goes in to notice that it is a tax increase.
Okay, and did I calculate it right, that it's going to be roughly for the people who pay it 11%?
So, no, the increase to the city is 11%, but if, remember, if you're homesteaded property, if you're a property that has your homestead, you're capped at 3%. I think commercial properties are capped at 10%. So the only way that you get an assessment greater than that is if you're a new building, a new construction, or you've put a new wing on your building or you've done something new. So homesteaded property is 3%, I think commercial is 10, I'll have to review that, but, so, I don't know of anybody but new properties that could pay 11%. So it's a come...
Thank you.
All right. No more speakers? No more questions?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think you can move to the departments.